Work meeting session. And do we have any new employees, young ones?
Your future employees.
Yeah, yeah. No, okay, no, no new employees today. How about future work meeting topic? Think we talked about possibly an update from Waste Management and ongoing activities that say that.
Yeah.
What else? Okay, all right. And a good update for Boys and Girls Club.
Cool, I'd like to ask welcome, my name is Andrew Kent, can you hear me or do we have to get?
I think.
Do we need it for the probably should use the mic live stream?
Yeah. Oh, great, this one, we're getting adjusted here, okay. Here's what goes, so, hi commissioners, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Andrea Kent, I'm with the Boys and Girls Club and we've got some of our wonderful club members here along with my staff Morgan Morgenstern. So they're going to have the opportunity to just introduce themselves, their name, their age, their grade, what school they go to, and then they're going to tell you a little bit about the garden. And after that, we'd like to give you a gift and our garden report on what your investment has done this past year. And then we would like a picture if that's possible. So I'm going to turn it over to Olivia first.
Cool, there we go. I'm Olivia and I am in sixth grade, I'm eleven and I go to Chert North. Some of the things I've learned from the garden include how to plant and harvest a lot of veggies, including tomatoes, peppers, peas, did I say potatoes? I'm not sure, yeah, I've learned how to plant and harvest a lot of things. And I know a lot more about hydroponic units than I did because I do a lot of work with the hydroponics. I know how to check the pH, pH level, nutrients level, and I know how to give them all that, I know how to plant all of it. And it's really cool to work in the garden.
There you go.
Um, my name is Lilith, I'm ten years old, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Gene Dillon. Um, I learned a lot about gardening, I harvested a lot of tomatoes and I learned a special technique to pick them where it won't kill the plant.
My name is Walea, I am in, I am ten years old, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Gene Dillon. I've learned how to harvest, sell and plant the vegetables. I like to plant the potatoes, tomatoes, ground cherries and lettuce.
So beyond planting and planting, weeding and watering, as you've heard, our kids like to harvest things. And beyond harvesting, we actually have the opportunity to build some of their entrepreneurial skills. So we have an onsite farmer's market with some of the produce. And so Olivia is going to share a little bit about her experience at our onsite farmer's market.
I commonly help with the farmer's market where we all learn how to really interact with people by begging their stuff for them, counting the money and doing the adding of how much we need to give them back for change, how to just be around people. It's really nice to have, to be around people in that environment because they're nice to us and it's really fun. I like working with all the other kids like Walea with the farmer's market.
Awesome, thank you Olivia. You know, in this day and age where we know money as actual dollars and quarters and nickels, it has become quite a card and kind of almost an invisible thing in our world. And so to be able to, for Joe to come and purchase vegetables and be able to say, oh, it's, you know, a dollar twenty-five and he gives a five, being able to count back that change and the accurate amount is a life skill, right? We kind of can do it probably in our sleep, but teaching our kids even just what the difference between a nickel and a quarter is, are things that they're, they're learning at the club and about financial stewardship. So we wanted to thank you today for the many, 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 many years the county has been a partner with the club and with specifically this gardening program. And so as part of our thanks, we just wanted to share a little basket of goodies with you and then also just ask you if you have any questions.
Any questions right now?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Thanks so much for coming, kids. My name's Joe Gould, I used to be part of the club as a board member there and, and I'm a teacher. So I just get really excited anytime we have students in front of us. So for anyone that wants to answer, looking at you three right there. If you could describe a really good day at the club, what would you say happened that day?
I'd say that probably the gardening will go well, we will get through the programs and maybe have farmer's market once in a while.
Very good, thank you.
One of my favorite days that I've had at the Boys and Girls Club started off with snack. Then I gotta go out to the garden and we put, we picked tomatoes, then I gotta do art. And then there was also a farmer's market, so I got to help with that and that was one of the best days.
Awesome.
Um. My, um, probably one of the best days at the Boys and Girls Club that I've had was I got there and I ate snack and I got to work on the hydroponic garden and that was really fun.
Awesome, thanks for sharing.
Okay, any other questions or comments, John?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know we don't have time to get into this, but I need to pick your brain sometime about the hydroponics because I'm really interested.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'd just like to thank you for teaching them though, such wholesome things. You know, the gardening is, I have a huge garden at home and I'm very into that. My wife and I, you know, make all kinds of stuff, salsa, applesauce, you name it. And, and she even made ketchup this year because we had extra tomatoes and it's kind of awesome. And so I love that and I love the fact that with my math degree and teaching license, I didn't end up using, but I, I really like the fact that you're teaching them, you know, how to count change and that kind of stuff. Because that's becoming somewhat of a lost art nowadays. So, so thanks for all the great work you're doing.
Mr. Chair.
Hi, Tim.
Andrea, thanks for coming. This is probably one of the, you know, one of my favorite meetings each year is when, when the Boys and Girls Club comes and listening to, the stories of success, you know, from, from the young kids and, you know, look forward to, you know, continuing this on, you know, in future years. And I'm curious to maybe sometime in the future, learn a little bit more about the hydroponics. Because when we did a tour a couple of years ago, you know, there was just a couple of machines, I'm not too sure if it expanded or, or what has changed, so.
And Tim, when I think of that, I think of all the weeds that I pull out of my garden and how you don't have to worry about the weeds as much with that, do you? Okay, thank you for coming.
And to answer your question, maybe we can set up a time to just come over and take a peek at those hydroponics just to look at those a little bit more to learn more about them. But it's a super sustainable way of, of growing. We actually harvested nine pounds of basil and I don't know if you know what basil goes for in a store these days, but nine pounds of basil is what is going to, it's going to take in order to have our harvest dinner. But these kids are going to prepare and so it's just really, really exciting. And October that they're going to have the opportunity to work with Chef Isaac Welly and Chef Michael Holloman to create that harvest dinner from things that were grown right in the hydroponic as well as in the garden. We've hosted, we've actually leveraged the opportunity to be in the garden and we actually had two, Joey, weren't you at our gala in Mar- in February? Yeah, so Joe would know that we had a party in the pergola as a live auction item for sixteen people. The come have an exclusive dinner curated by Chef Isaac Welly in our garden. And it was so popular that it actually sold twice the night of. And we just completed the last one this past weekend with sixteen or so guests. So we're using some of that produce obviously to do those types of things, but our kids are eating it, which is most important every single day. So they're, they're growing it and I said, well, you're harvesting those tomatoes, are you eating them? And it was yes, they are eating them, which is wonderful. Anyway, we'll give you the gifts to, to eat and the report. And then if we could get you to come around, or maybe would you mind coming around and you can hold your gift and then we can take a picture? We kind of like to post things like this on social media. I'm going to just take a picture of this. There we go, perfect. After reading, thank you so much. And here's your report. We have over a thousand pounds harvested, all of our partnerships, number of kids that were impacted by the garden, people around. Lots of great pictures and a well approach with the area on the back side. This year they raised purple snap peas, did you even know they existed?
Thanks kids, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, there you go. And imagine how big that a garden would have been for that. All right, Tim Rock and Land Sale.
All right, good afternoon commissioners, enjoying a summer day in September here. I gave quite a few numbers out on, on, in the packet. And then I listened to Commissioner Carlson on chat about today and it kind of changed how I want to do a process a little bit to kind of give a little more information, if that's okay, and you certainly can ask questions. Uh, we looked at numbers and first off, I just want to tell you, we, we harvest twenty-one hundred and twenty acres a year that we treat. And so we try to divide that up into three auctions, April, August and December. And we tend to have our largest auction in April because that's when the loggers are on its breakup. So we put thirty-five percent of our acres up in April. And then in summer, we have thirty, we put thirty-one percent of our acres up. So that's one reason why we're a little bit less revenue generation for that because summers usually tend to be a little bit busier. And then we also like to hang on to some acres for December because we don't want to end up in December and only have about twenty acres or twenty percent of our acres left and only have maybe nine timber sales because then no one's going to show up. So we always try to get, you know, maybe fourteen, sixteen, eighteen sales at each auction. So what we did in August and why our revenues are down a little bit is we had seventy less acres than we had and about two thousand two hundred less cords. So that's why there was such a difference from our April auction, which did generate six hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of revenue. We only got five hundred and twenty thousand in August. And the numbers on the front page were wrong. I'm guilty, I read the wrong column, too many numbers sometimes. But that's why I kind of let you know, and overall is one point one million dollars that we have sold this year. And that's usually been our average for the past few years. So we're, we met that with only two auctions and we still got a third one coming up. So we're sitting very well, even though like you noticed also, you, you review these things very closely, Commissioner Carlson. Aspen was down, we're still at forty-one dollars an acre for the year. But that was down, we sold less cords and the price was down. And red pine was really our, our pick us up thing. We almost made as much money at red pine as we did in Aspen and that's kind of rare. We hope it continues because you watch the news and they're kind of talking about how housing starts and building is starting to taper off a little bit with the higher interest rates. So I hope that doesn't affect us too much here because obviously the way the housing starts go, the way our stumpage prices go with Wes Fraser making particle board, Oriental strand board and Pilates Celtic making two by four studs. So I kind of wanted to throw that out as maybe just a refresher for some of the board members who have been on and for those who are new, that's kind of how we approach these auctions. And, but it's been very successful and like I said, I'd like you to focus on, we've already made one point one million dollars in sales. Uh, and that's, that's huge compared to other years. Of course, this is all unrealized revenue, which they only pay fifteen percent down and then they pay the remainder before they go in and harvest. So we kind of see these revenues in the year after and the year after that a little bit. So, but we're still working on higher stumpages prices from twenty twenty-two. So, so things are looking good and I think our balance is about nine hundred thousand in our tax forfeited fund right now. And if you've noticed in past years, I'm coming forward with only about six hundred and fifty or seven hundred thousand. So we're already sitting at nine hundred thousand. And December tends to be a big month once things freeze up and they can get into some sales. So I'm really not focusing on the, the numbers, but you can kind of see what the numbers are and what we did, if that's okay. And just give you a little bit of a broader view, if that's okay. Do you have any questions on our timber sales?
And, and usually Dick, they can have up to two years on any one sale.
That's our normal contract period.
Right.
Although if it's a strictly winter auction, we give three winters, you know, which wouldn't necessarily mean three full years. It depends on, like if we sold something in August, they'd get two and a half years.
Right.
But yeah, we try to give three winters for winter only, but otherwise our standard is two, two-year contract period.
You've done excellent job with managing that, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, we're so dependent on the market, you know, and, and we'll see how things go in the future here. But if that's okay to present that, because you do have all the facts and figures on how much we actually made, if you look at the charts and such. So I appreciate you letting me take that approach. And then the other thing I was going to mention was our land sale results. We had a land sale last month in August and Commissioner Sumner, I'm glad you are forcing me or not forcing me, but asking me to come after all these. And I would have been up here last time, but I got bumped, so just to let you know. But we did have an auction and we're being very careful on these with that Tyler versus Hennepin situation right now. We didn't sell or offer for sale a house up in Washkiss because we thought we might be vulnerable to go through all the, all the steps and process and then have the previous landowner come forward and say, well, now you owe us the difference between what you sold it for and what I owed in taxes. So we withheld that, but we sold one in Wilton for sixty-eight thousand dollars because we know we couldn't find any errors to that one. And then we cleaned up three trespasses, three encroachments, so by sealed bid, so all three of those sold. So we really didn't sell a lot money wise, but we did clean up some things and, and reduce our liability on these houses and such. And I think our, what did we sell for total? No, I can't find the page. Looks like we sold seventy, roughly seventy-four thousand dollars, which is still better than nothing. And like I said, clean things up. We're going to continue to move forward, but I can't impress upon everybody enough that depending on what the legislature does next spring with this whole Tyler versus Hennepin thing could be a little bit of a game changer. And I'm not trying to cry wolf or anything, but we're all more questions than answers and that's why I haven't talked too much about it. But changes are coming, we just don't know how, how different the changes are going to be.
Uh, one thing, Dick, besides doing a cleanup of that area, we also get these properties back on the tax roll.
Correct, absolutely. So we got four more back on the tax rolls.
Yeah.
And I think there's a year delay on that, but they're still back on the tax rolls. So that's always good. And any questions? Like I said, I took a little different tact on things and I hope I didn't step on anybody's feet by going that route, but that's where we're at for now.
Thank you.
I'm going to start listening and chat about every single time now. Is that really, you made me scramble this afternoon, Commissioner Carlson. Thanks, everybody.
I think you're, I think you're up there for the boys.
See, I was so concerned about that other part. Thanks for calling me back here, Williamson. And this was another thing I got a little chastised for. This is a situation where Mr. Williamson has a hunting shack that's about a third on tax forfeited land and two thirds on his property. And we discussed it in the staff level and it, our first instinct was obviously to tell them to move it. And then the forester for that area, Nick Ronning, showed me some maps and some photos. And it looked like if we would give him five acres to help out with that trespass, we could get five acres from him. And there is a map in your packet, which kind of shows how it would shift the forty. And then it would allow us legal access to some acreages that we don't normally have legal access to, to the east of the whole situation. And legal access sometimes is very difficult for us at times. So we thought that would be a good situation to offer that up and move forward. He's absorbing the costs, you know, for everything that we go through on that. We are not, because it was his mistake to build it there. But that's one thing we looked at from the county standpoint and it truly benefits us. It obviously benefits Mr. Williamson, but it also benefits us and that's why we decided to go that route. And the land review committee did agree that it was a good route to go. And so that's why we're there there. But the thing that is the most important today is it's in the regular packet consent agenda is we need to set a public hearing and a time and a date. And I offered up October third, which is two weeks from today, to have a public hearing for everybody to come in if they have any objections or any comments on the, on the exchange. The township had no issues with it and I know Commissioner Carlson, I mentioned this to you, we do come forward a couple, three times for all these exchanges. This is number two, the public hearing will be number three. And I honestly forgot if we needed a number four, but I actually have to go downtown to St. Paul in front of the land committee, which is the governor, the school superintendent and one other person, because they have to ultimately approve any of this. So after we clear it, it goes to the DNR and then it goes all the way to St. Paul for any land exchange. So there's a lot of steps along the way that we have to cover our bases and make sure we're taking the proper steps.
Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you. I think I'm done then, right? There's nothing else up there. Have a good evening, thanks.
Hey, mighty Mississippi River cleanup.
Good afternoon commissioners, uh, this is actually a follow-up, uh, kind of a circle back on something that we had, we had, it was on a draft agenda back in May and we bumped it to make room for other things and then just moved on and kept doing other things. But Tom keeps a pretty good list of these topics that like to come back. And so he reminded me that, hey, we haven't done this, there's a few minutes on this work session, so let's bring it up. So here we are, talking about the mighty Mississippi River Cleanup Challenge. To the best of my knowledge, I might not have all the details straight here on the, the history background of this, but I believe Commissioner Sumner brought this to Tom's attention and asked if we were going to be doing something like this. He saw a challenge that was put out by Good Hugh County for mighty Mississippi River Cleanup Projects. And the, the challenge really was to do some sort of a project to clean the river between April fifteenth and May fifteenth and set a date and time and advertise it, invite everybody and then count the number of people. And then the idea was the county with the most people and that show up and the most engagement wins. And there was some challenge there. This was a, a pretty short turnaround for us, but, but we, we kind of tossed it around a little bit on what would, what would really work. You know, we, we said the, the one place in the county that, you know, outside of the city limits, that kind of made some sense to do something would be where the tubers really go down by the power dam downstream there. But typically that garbage starts to accumulate once the weather gets warm. So doing it in the spring is kind of almost the wrong time of the year and kind of what really works, what makes sense. So we reached out to the city of Bemidji and the city was interested in partnering and doing something. And what we ultimately came up with was the city parks department has had a, I don't know if they still have this staff person or not, but they had a outreach person that was working on stuff and they created a flyer and we picked a date and the date just happened, just the way it all worked out, the date was the Saturday of fishing opener. And so there are not a lot of people that are really going to jump on that. But it's, uh, it's a few hours where those non-fishinger people that aren't excited about going on opener or something have something to do. And what they did was they had a, the city already has all these cleanup kits where they hand out safety vests and garbage bags and gloves and all this stuff. So they had it set up for a few hours during the day where people can stop by the visitor center, pick up these cleanup kits, go do a cleanup. The focus was going to be on the Lake Bemidji shoreline right downtown and the river stretch between Lake Bemidji and Lake Irving. Um, so we see a lot of trash and, and need for cleanup. And so the total number of people that came, I, I'm still unclear with the actual total number of people. They gave out four kits. So I'm assuming that's somewhere between four and ten or twelve people that showed up to do that that day. And they collected seven bags of trash that was mostly from that little river stretch between Bemidji Irving and a little bit on the lake shore, Lake Bemidji itself. And I, I don't have much else to add other than it was a good partnership with the city. Everybody was kind of excited about doing something. And if, if something like this hat challenge type thing happens again next year, we'll be a little better prepared to, to respond and deal with that in a, in a proactive fashion. And then we're also talking about trying to coordinate with some sort of volunteer group to do some tubing cleanups on the tubing stretch too. So that didn't happen this summer. There was one group that was kind of interested, but then just fell off the radar and decided that they didn't have time to do that anymore. So we're going to have to come up with some sort of plan, but I think those are both good causes and we'll continue to do them if there's support.
Yes, John?
Brent, I can tell you that for the
Brent, I can tell you that four of those bags came from myself and two of my grandkids.
Oh.
So and I didn't realize that we were over half of the whole people that showed up.
Well, I couldn't make it. Uh, our stat, we had just we're on the tail end of wrapping up our tree program stuff. So most of our staff had been already working long hours and stuff those last couple of weeks. Not too many people were excited about the prospect of coming in on a Saturday to do that. And the city had agreed to do it, so we just let them run with it. And the the intern that was going to be there and going to be doing everything had something come up at the last minute, so they weren't there. The only information we really got back was from the uh volunteers or the employees that were at the visitor center. And they weren't really given clear instructions on tracking the number of people and stuff, but they did know they give out four kits. That's all. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, well, first, thank you, Commissioner Carlson, for for doing a great deed of uh picking up the trash and and thanks Brent and Tom for for taking the initiative and and um making this all happen, you know, within a last minute, you know. And I got an email one day and I poured it onto Tom and this you guys, uh, I think, uh, you know, the the seven bags, you know, I I think speaks a lot because I mean, those are seven bags that would probably still be you know, in the lake or the lake shore, the river, river, uh, longer. So um, you know, maybe if something like this comes up again in the future, I'll I'll hopefully have enough time to pass it on to you guys. So thank you. And um uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, do you have like an elevator update for uh the state fair?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, how long do you want?
Minute.
No, the, you know, we we did the keep it clean booth at the state fair. Um, we had staff present um for I'm just going off the top, probably nine out of the twelve, ten, nine or ten out of the twelve days. Um, we had a couple volunteers step up and cover the rest of them, but um Robin and Brian Dwight from Waschkish were the ones that this was kind of their their dream, their idea, their initiative. And the only reason we ever agreed that we would apply for this grant and do the state fair thing is because they had said we will be at the state fair the entire time. Don't worry. We'll make sure it's covered. Okay, well, they were there twelve days straight. Um, and they did amazing. It was it was a pretty good experience. I think it was a good experience for everybody that volunteered, for all the staff that went. Um, it's the state fair. It's it's kind of fun. It's really busy. And for us that live up here, right, well, I speak for myself at least, um I'm always happy to leave the cities. It was it was fun to be there. And it was it was great to leave and come back. There's a lot of people, a lot of busyness, a lot of crazy stuff that goes on around. Um, but but it was engaging. We we handed out cell phone lanyards was our our giveaway. We wanted to do something at the state fair. And um and we had nine thousand lanyards. So we divided it up and had an allotment for each day. And they're um basically lanyards to to hook yours to your cell phone so you don't drop your cell phone down the ice fishing hole is the the principal thought there. But um the lanyard giveaway went over extremely well. And what it did is it allowed the opportunity for people to step off the sidewalk and come talk to us. Because imagine it not too many people at the state fair really want to pause their day to talk to somebody about picking up trash or cleaning up after themselves. I mean, it's just it's not exciting. Um, but the people that did stop were glad and we went through all of our lanyards every day. We talked to a lot of people, made a lot of connections, a lot of uh business owners, the corporate company owners that own fishing companies stopped by and said hi and they knew what we were doing. They knew what we were about, but they'd never met anybody that's working on the keep it clean initiative before. A lot of people stopped by to say thank you for doing what you're doing and we'll keep pushing the message too and created a lot of different um a lot of synergy, a lot of energy moving forward to uh to build the keep it clean momentum forward. So it was good. Um, I'm not sure we're planning on doing it again, but it was it was good and it was fun and we all learned a lot.
All right. Thank you, Brent.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay, jail update. We're moving this.
Well, Commissioners, thank you for having me here again today. Um try to come to you about every quarter with a little update on the jail itself, the project that we're uh we're undertaking here. Um, so go through a few items here. I don't remember how to advance. There we go. Um, so a quick agenda on what I'm going to try and cover for you today, just a review of our process that we're going through. What we've recently been working on and then next step, some things we need to be considering going forward. So okay, I will get this. There we go. So we're familiar with this NIC flow chart. This is the National Institute of Corrections process that we are following to uh work on your jail project. The red box I put up there, that is, I know this is kind of fuzzy, but um that's the work we've basically generally completed to date. This is a lot of the work that we've had to establish what needs to be done. And working through sort of the pre-design and getting us to the point of the election. Everything you see outside of that box is kind of our next steps and what we need to be considering. You can't really read it here, but pull it five up at the top is design and then you kind of move into construction. So to give you a quick update on some of the recent progress, um there we go. Um, you guys are all familiar with where we're at with the land acquisition, just to give you a quick update on the Crown property. Um, all the investigations we're doing due diligence wise on the site are ongoing right now. Um soil borings for that property are scheduled to take place this coming Friday. So uh, once that's done, we'll know what the suitability of the soils are on that site. Uh, the phase one survey, I'm expecting also to be on my desk by the end of the week. So that work has been uh virtually completed. And then the archaeological investigations on the site, uh, the onsite investigations actually actually took place this last weekend. So nothing was reported to be found, but I'll be getting a full written report on that uh in October. So the paperwork, everything associated with actually documenting what we're finding on the site is all a little slower than the work you see happening on site to do the investigations, but those should all come to me um sometime in October. So and as you're probably somewhat aware, we've been working um in the design committee primarily with Klein McCarthy Architects to advance the design of the building um so we can see where we're at with everything. This is uh one of the documents they've put together here. The three I'm going to show you here are kind of the documents we're looking at having out there for the election for public information for everyone to know what's what's being proposed here. So this is the Crown property with the um the building itself that's being looked at put on that property. You can see fits on there, you know, it's nine acres and it fills up more than anyone would probably assume when you throw that out there. So um, parking, drivelanes, everything's necessary with the property. Uh, another document that's been produced at this point is basically the concept block diagram you're seeing here. This is really just highlighting the different spaces that are within the proposed building. Uh, big brown blocks are housing. You know, other ones there, kitchens and and intake take up uh large portions of that as well as administration. So green then being programming. You can kind of see we have all the different needs for a full facility shown in these block diagrams. And then finally, just some uh concepts related to this building uh showing other similar jails that have been designed and built in the region recently. And then the kind of three D massing of what this would be. You can kind of see certain blocks of the 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 facility or the housing blocks or the intake that are a little taller, more mass to those. Otherwise, it's generally a one-story building. So um with that, we've we've kind of reached the point where um bringing up the schedule here right now. We're in a little bit of this wait and see mode with things. The election's coming up in November. Everyone wants to know what the results of that are going to be. The documents that I showed you here and and some other items are what we've hired Klein McCarthy to do thus far. We hired them for forty five thousand dollars to do a pre-design on the project. But as you kind of look at this schedule here, like I say, we're a little bit in a lull until after the election. But schedule is very important. I'm a builder. This is something I'm gonna never back down on. Schedule is critical to everything we do with this. And why is it critical? Well, one thing I just want to point out to you here and and I'll walk you through a number of things here on the schedule. And the dollars associated with schedule. We've got a proposed project of eighty million dollars here overall. As we all know, and we're all watching the news, all we hear is inflation. We see it real time in our lives. Um, but if we assume that we're going to be looking at four percent inflation continuing forward on eighty million dollars, that's three point two million dollars per year inflation that we could see added to this project. That's two hundred sixty six thousand per month. Now, you as Beltrami County, from everything I've been told, working with you guys, um, you're currently spending one point two million dollars per year roughly in out-of-county housing, hundred thousand dollars a month ballpark. So each month that we don't advance things on this project are an additional potential of three hundred sixty six thousand dollars. So me, I'm here to be your uh consultant. What can we do to advance things, advance the design and move things forward? There's two things that I see that could be done. We can keep moving with design rather than sitting here today and just kind of waiting to see what happens with an election or other things. We can, we can take some action that way. And then another thing to consider further down the road would be some early bid packages. Um, where you have portions of the building before you have complete design done, design completed that you could release portions of it to bid early. So um, as we're looking at the schedule here, to finish the remaining design phases is about a ten-month process. Uh, there's plus on top of that, we've got some estimate checks that I feel should be done. There's three different design phases remain schematic, design development, construction documents. Between each of those, it is good, it's wise to check where you're at on your estimate, you know, to make sure that we're not designing beyond what the budget is. So you should account for some time on top of that. So I'm calling this basically eleven to twelve months to complete your design and get to a point where you have a full set of documents that you can bid. So one year total on that, like I said at the bottom. Oh, going the wrong way again. So to kind of help explain this and let everyone on the commission here understand how this impacts you, I put together four different scenarios here I want to run through. The first one here is sort of what I'd call the worst case scenario where we do nothing at all, but wait until a twenty twenty four election. So saying this year, the vote doesn't pass, we put it back up again in the fall of twenty four, and then we take action, then we advance design at that point. If that's the case with that full year of design, after that, you're going from November of twenty four to November of twenty five roughly to complete your design. Generally, we don't like to start major construction projects in November in northern Minnesota. So you may not start construction in that scenario until May of twenty six. And you're not moving into that facility then until spring of twenty eight. With that, I put some numbers on the bottom of each of these scenarios. You'd add six point four million dollars in inflation to the project. And you're out of county housing for four and a half years would be five point four million dollars. The second scenario here is to do something, I call it, and then wait for the election. So even if things don't pass this year, you could advance today the schematic design process on the on the project. What that does is it eliminates that some of that concern over the bids coming in in November. And you're more uh able to act a little quicker. So in this case, I'm basically assuming that you could start construction in July of twenty twenty five and then be complete by July of twenty twenty seven. Your costs then reduce slightly um based on the number of months out you are for before you move in. This one is basically what I call kind of the best case scenario. And what I would like you you to consider today, this would be beginning schematic design right now taking advantage of this time between now and the election, basically. And in this, you then don't lose that um next few months, you don't end up with that November scenario to start. So in it, and if you also issue some of those early bid packages I was talking about, I believe you could be able to start construction as soon as next spring, May of twenty twenty four and then be in your facility in May of twenty twenty six. Um, inflation then on that is just two point six million. And your out-of-county housing costs are then roughly three million over that timeframe. And then did I go the wrong way? Okay, this one, the final one, is very similar to what I just described, but it's basically waiting until after the election this year. And then advancing schematic design. So assuming the vote passes here in November, then you take action and and have the next phase of design move forward. You still don't hit, you know, things quite as quickly because you've lost some time here. So you may end up with a May twenty five start in that scenario as well. So the numbers obviously you can look at here and and uh see how they're kind of in the middle. So uh, what I'm suggesting you today is we have a contract already in place with Klein McCarthy. Um, when that was negotiated back in May, we only hired them to do the pre-design. That was forty five thousand two hundred dollars to do what I've shown to you earlier today. Um the three different phases I mentioned schematic design development and then construction documents for each of those. Um I'm sorry, I I got ahead of myself on that. There's four different phases that were considered in that contract, not design phases. There were phases that were within our RFP for the project. Pre-designed schematic through bidding, which is all four of the ones I was just talking about. Administration and missioning, which is more making the construction project happen and then making sure everything is functional once you're done. Then the policies and procedures, which is helping uh jail staff basically come up with how to use the facility once it's done. So as I was going into a second ago, each phase each design phase can be advanced for twenty five percent of the design fee. So using really rough math again on things, if the construction portion of this comes in at roughly sixty million dollars, um, their design fee would be roughly three point six million dollars. So twenty five percent of that today would be nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I've talked to Scott Fettig, the president of Klein McCarthy. He's willing to if if the commission is concerned with things, if the vote didn't pass in November and you said, you know what, we're concerned, let's put the brakes on things, he would stop at fifty percent. So um you'd be looking at four hundred fifty thousand dollars if there was a concern doing that. So um, my recommendation to keep things moving as quickly as possible and to hopefully capitalize on schedule as quickly as we can would be to move forward with this. And uh, Tom, I I know I've kind of chatted with you about it a little bit. I don't know if there's any questions from the financing side or anything like that to the board and let Tom to cover. Um that is basically what I have. So I'm open to questions at this point. So
Here. Yeah, I'm glad you've got around to saying that it's a sixty million dollar project, not an eighty million dollar project. And we need to work the problem backwards from eighty million. So if we're going to have eight million dollars or whatever and in inflationary costs, then we need to factor that in upfront so that we aren't over-designing. And we the eighty million is a max cap. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that, that we're not designing this at eighty and then going to go over that. We're designing it more than the sixty and have contingencies and so on um to accommodate for inflation and other stuff. So that was it. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the board? Tom, did you have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, that, well, this question's actually for Tom. If if we were to agree that that's a good idea, that it'd be a cost savings measure to go forward with the schematic designs, uh, where would we find four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Carlson, when we contemplated this spend rate back in February when we were looking at property, uh, the county auditor and myself uh looked Uh, the county auditor and myself, uh, looked at what the county's finances were in regards to holdings currently. And projected what that spend rate might be tolerable or what, what spend rate would be tolerable for the county. At that time, we were considering what it would cost to acquire property. And so we put a placeholder in our finances for what we thought we could afford with regard to property. Um, suffice it to say that the request that's being made this evening. Um, at the nine hundred thousand dollar mark or at the four fifty, if we stop at fifty percent design after the election. Should it not go our way is within those parameters. So, um, that would come out of the SAM grant. Um, portion of the budget, which has been designed, you know, years and years ago for these very types of situations. So we would not have to, uh, it's essentially reserve money, if you will, that's already uh, been collected by the county. And sitting in a special fund for these types of uh, uh, strategic opportunities.
So, Mr. Chair, it seems like it, because of the generosity of the Fan Cattle family. That maybe we could take advantage of some significant cost savings down the road. By advancing that schematic design at this time. I mean, that's millions of dollars we could save by, by taking, again, taking advantage of the generosity of the Fan Cattle family. And, and instead of having to pay that money out for that land, using it to get things moving. I think that makes great sense.
Basically, yeah, parlaying it into continuing more saving.
Anyone else? Comments?
Oh, Mr. Chair, um. I guess, uh. You know, I'm all for, you know, continuing to move forward with the project because I think, uh. We're, we're gonna have to do it anyway. I mean, whether we do it now or next year. Um, I. So a little concerned about, you know, the, the finance part of it, you know, I'm, I'm all for saving money, but. Um, and understanding that, you know, it's coming from the, the SAM grant, the strategic, the line management grant. But what's our plan for replenishing that? You know, if we're taking from one pot to. Pay for something.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, to address Commissioner Sumner's uh, question, which is a good one. You might recall that we had passed a resolution, uh, for reimbursement agreement ordinance, uh, essentially. That allows us to reimburse ourselves from the proceeds that we get. For uh, what we hope will be revenues from the sales tax uh, referendum. And that would go to replace all of the funding that we have spent or all the costs we have spent that we are just currently tracking separately. Back into the SAM grant program so that it would be, it would be whole. And be allowed to be used in the future for similar types of strategic advantages.
So it's a, uh, you know, let's say that the, the sales tax. Uh, referendum doesn't pass this year or next year. And so then this will be on the. On the levy. Would we be able to recoup, you know? Half a million dollars for the SAM grant, you know, through the levy?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, again, Commissioner Sumner, great questions. If the sales tax referendum does not pass, the board will have to. Assess what it would like to do going forward. Of course, the most obvious, uh, um, funding source. Uh, would be property tax levy. Now, the, remember the financing of the facility and its construction and design and all that stuff was contemplated through the issuing of a bond. It's the way that the bond would get paid in regards to how. Um, the fund would get replenished. So in either of those scenarios, whether the primary revenue source is sales taxes. Or property taxes or some other source of, of funding. The reimbursement, um, resolution authorizes. Us to reimburse that same fund regardless of the type of funding that comes into it. So you'll be in good graces either way. Um, you know, so we shouldn't have any issues in regards to replenishing that fund going forward.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, my, uh, last question is. Um, I mean, that this is, uh, the sales tax is on the ballot for November. Um, can you help clarify whether the county board, uh, commissioners or. Or administration, are, are we allowed to, um. Talk, talk about the sales tax and, and what, what are the, the do's and don'ts? I, I think that was.
Excellent question, uh, Commissioner Sumner. Uh, the board is free to discuss, um, the, uh, sales tax referendum. It just cannot advocate one way or another. So. Uh, you can educate about what it would do, what its purpose is, how much it's going to be, what the pros and the cons are. And, uh, what the alternative might be or the alternatives. You can have all of those conversations. You just can't campaign for a side, one way or the other.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Just on the agenda for tonight for us to decide on, and if not, should we?
No, it's not. It's not on there right now.
Mr. Chair, you know, and I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner God, I'm not too sure if I'm ready to vote on it tonight, you know, uh, maybe. Uh, in two weeks, um, I think would be. Helpful, uh, for me to maybe inquire a little bit more. Um. I just, like I said, I, I, I know that we need to continue to, to, to make progress on this, but I just want to make sure that, uh. I, I wanna learn a little bit more about the finances before I put the, you know, uh. I guess my, my stamp of approval on, on this, um.
Any others?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. I think I'm generally in favor of going this route that's been suggested tonight. Uh, I did have some questions and. And wonderings and, and the board and Tom, um, kind of answered those for me. Um, I think we need to be smart about this. And, you know, the, the facts. Are getting out to the voters. Um, I have faith in the electorate. And. I, I think, uh, we might be taking a little bit of a gamble by doing this. Um, but. Um, you know, I, I think there is options for, depending on how the election turns out this. November, um. I, I would be willing to discuss this during the regular board meeting tonight and, and, uh. And, and probably support it. Um, uh, because we do need to save as much money. I'm. I'm actually a little surprised that this kind of wasn't already built into the contract. Um, I feel like. We do need to be constantly working and, and being productive. Um, even though we don't really know, um. Where the vote is gonna go. Um, I have my guesses, um, but, uh. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so. I think we're, so unless they're in favor of bringing this to the board, yeah, tonight, we'll talk some more. Any other questions or comments?
I did have a, a question on. Not directly related, related to this proposal, but, um, maybe a question for the sheriff, uh, you know, as, as far as. Um, I know the employees are in favor of, uh, the dispatch. Operations kind of going into the new facility. Has that been, uh, where, where does that stand?
We had initially, um, thought about that during the, the process, but it was never entered into when we, we submitted the. The proposal or the, the paperwork to, uh, the state where we went down and testified for the LST. Um, there is some possibilities with additional room. In the facility, and, and I, when I say additional room, it's not room that's not going to be utilized on a daily basis. It's more of a multi-purpose room that could be utilized as a backup P S app. Uh, for the sheriff's office in the event that we lost our, our, uh, our primary P S app. But as of right now, we would, we do not have any plans to move this dispatch to the new facility. It'd be a backup.
Okay. Um, well, I guess I would encourage us to, to look at that some more and, and see if we can incorporate that into the. Overall design. I, I did have, uh, um, some suggestions for the design committee, uh. And, uh, and for our consultant here and, and I had some questions answered over the email, but. Um, I know that originally, um, there was some plans to incorporate. Uh, outdoor space and, uh, maybe a sweat lodge. Um. Taking into account the, um, the culture of the majority of the population in the jail. Um, and I know that has since been cut. Um, but, you know, it's. Not too late. So I would encourage, uh, the design committee and the steering committee to take another look at that. And, uh, see if we can incorporate those pieces in as well. So, thank you.
Tom, are you going to update the board on the host? Is it?
Yes, okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Chair. Uh, if the board does want to entertain this, it would have to add it as an agenda item to the regular meeting.
I do will, uh, take a couple minute break and come back for the rest of it. Uh, and we'll stand and have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and do we have any uh citizens that would like to address the board? On a topic that's not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for approval of the agenda.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the agenda with the following changes. Move item seven A from the consent agenda to item twelve A on the regular agenda, that's the uh approval of the minutes. And um add. Oh, I'm sorry, so what happened in the minutes is that the minutes had a a little wording thing wrong on the ten percent versus fifteen percent. So we just had to correct the minutes and that's, so that was for the regular agenda for the purpose of correcting the opioid settlement funding allocation amount says were reported in the minutes. That's the reason for that, um and then add item twelve B, uh jail design contract uh discussion. And item twelve C administrator update.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the cons- consent agenda as amended.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. All right. The natural uh resource management approval of the resolution for Public Lands Day.
Mister Chair, I'll make that motion to uh set the or uh res- approval of a resolution for Public Lands Day.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Uh, so this was uh something I had uh suggested that we bring forward recognizing September twenty-third as the thirtieth annual National Public Lands Day, this uh um was something that was brought to my attention uh from a constituent of mine, and I agreed to uh bring it forward because I think it's a good idea that we recognize Public Lands Day, it has grown into the largest single day volunteer event for public lands in the country. And uh volunteers across the nation will be helping with public land projects and environmental engagement. Um, I think it's just good that um, you know, we recognize the fact that seventy percent of Beltrami County is comprised of public land. Uh, that's about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand acres that provides citizens a chance to connect with nature and enjoy recreational and natural resource opportunities, so I would encourage support and encourage folks to um volunteer on uh National Public Lands Day.
Mister Chair.
Good, Tim.
Um. I guess uh if if we can um I am, I would maybe rescind my motion to allow Commissioner Ghul to make that motion uh being that he has brought this uh issue forward and looking through my pack, I was uh I I was thinking this was the uh the uh Williamson site, so.
Okay, all right, there, there should be no.
He withdrew, then he would have to re- withdraw his second.
Yep, I'll withdraw my second and make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
All right. I can say all in favor now? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and thank you very much, Tim, that was, that was good. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is resolution of support for the Beltrami County Correctional Facility.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, Commissioners, I have a resolution in front of you this evening that uh revives another resolution dating uh back to two thousand and nineteen at the request uh for the uh Office of uh Capital Investments. You might recall that we had uh put a request into that office for fifty million dollars worth of state funding. As part of the application process, we were obligated to put a resolution of support for the project. Uh, we included the resolution done back in two thousand and nineteen, our staff would like to have a renewed resolution, one that is a little bit more specific to the request being made. So the resolution that you have before you this evening for your consideration details the need and the history of the project. Um, it also identifies the project as a priority for the county. Uh, it authorizes the application to and encourages support uh for the state's capital investment program. And it assures that no uh or that non-state matching funds will also be utilized should we successfully procure any state funds. So that's essentially the gist behind the resolution, uh it's essentially more of a formality, it's not necessarily required for the application, although it's strongly encouraged, so I figured while there's still time, uh and the staff down there are encouraging our amendment with this inclusion, uh it might be good to get in front of you for your consideration.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution.
Your second?
Second.
Any more, any discussion?
Uh, Mister Chair, um, I guess with with recent developments and and uh uh comments made uh by my colleague Commissioner Ghul in the uh work session, you know, um I, I'm not too sure if I fully support, you know, the uh Beltrami County Correctional Facility, um if there are, you know, changes being made within um our our proposed uh plans for um allowing, you know, traditional uh ceremonial activities to happen within uh the Beltrami County Jail. Um, so that uh uh, I'm not gonna approve, uh my vote is gonna be a no for approval of uh support.
Okay, is there, Joe?
Um, Mister Chair. Um, I'm still gonna support this tonight, uh because I feel like there is time to um still look at reincorporating um some cultural programming that has been uh recently cut from the plans, um I think we still have a few years to go and and there's time to uh to correct that, so I I'm remaining optimistic uh and I will be a yes vote on this, but I still have my concerns regarding my comments earlier about um you know, the lack of cultural programming, uh but I think there is time to put that back in, so I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else, John?
So, Mister Chair, I'd like to hear from the county administrator with regard to um how important it would be that we would have a unanimous vote or not, uh if you could.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Carlson, I I'll get to that in just a moment, but if I may, I'm a bit confused about the comments that are circulating amongst some of the board members regarding cutting of cultural programs. I'm not familiar with any cultural programs that are being cut. Uh, there was mentioned earlier in the dialogue during the work session that there was a sweat lodge that was being cut. There was never an inclusion of a sweat lodge ever in the design, that's not even something we're sure the D L C will approve. Uh, so that was never included, therefore it could not be cut. Additionally, I've heard about uh outdoor recreation space, you might recall that when we hired the uh consultant architect that's working for us, the recommendation was not to include outdoor recreation space and that jails were not including those uh essentially in newer designs. So we never contemplated including that either. There was a version of the plan set that did include an outdoor recreation uh facility or or area that was quickly cut as a reminder that we were not including that in the facility, so, but that's not cultural. Uh, it just didn't make sense and it's difficult to manage an outdoor rec space when it would only be used three and a half to four months out of the year. And it has uh other additional uh management problems as it relates to um a number of different areas, including contraband, uh so that was the only thing I'm aware of that was reduced, I think it was a couple hundred square feet out of the plan, but there's nothing from a cultural standpoint that I'm aware of, and I sit on the steering committee and the design and operations committee and the finance committee. So I guess I would like to know what is being understood uh be because I think there either is a misunderstanding or or I stand to be corrected. And then to Commissioner Carlson's question, a unanimous vote would certainly send a very strong message for the fifty million dollars we're requesting of the state. I think if the board is split on that, it suggests to the state that uh maybe this isn't the strongest priority for the county and that uh we aren't necessarily needing of the funding that we're requesting for in the application.
Okay.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, I I would encourage my uh colleague here, uh Mister Sumner, to maybe reconsider um uh not, I uh voting in favor for this is what I'm going to do and I would I would encourage others to do the same because we have a lot of time still. Um, I don't really wanna get into, she said.
Mister Chair, if we have time, I'm hopeful that uh uh this has time to come back in a few weeks, so we can, you know, try to get to, you know, the bottom of of um, you know, the whole cultural aspect of of, you know, what uh what we are looking at, you know, in in the correctional facility.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mister Chair, would that maybe be involved having the programming committee come before us and talk to us about their ideas that they have, is that something that our board needs at this point?
Uh, Mister Chair, I might recommend, that could be the unwieldy, I might recommend that you use the steering committee to solicit comments, questions, concerns, or whatever from the programming committee, in fact, the steering committee is meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, this will be an item on the agenda, I will make sure it gets added because it's hitting me as a surprise this evening. Uh, so we will add that to tomorrow's agenda and our project managers in the back, I know he's already wrote it down. Um, I don't think you need the programming committee to come to before the board, I mean, that's why you set up the governance structure that you have through the steering committee, so that would be my recommendation. As it relates to Commissioner Sumner's question about more time, um, I do believe that they need the resolution of support in early October, I'm just not certain if it's October fifth or earlier, if it is, this will run late, if it's not, we we would have the time, of course, to to do that. I could go through emails, uh and we could punt this issue to the end of the evening and look for what that deadline is, and if it is after October fifth, you'll have a commission meeting on October fifth where you could theoretically bring this issue up again for consideration.
Their next uh bargaining is October third.
Third, yeah, third, okay, sorry, I thought it was the fifth, that was September fifth.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that's probably likely that this could be pushed, but I would like to just double check um.
Well, Mister Chair, you know, I I'll throughout this process now, you know, I I have mentioned that, you know, I I believe it's uh important that we um do something, you know, in regards to to, you know, the correction of facility, um but I, you know, I I do have concerns, so, I mean, if you wanna vote on it tonight, I I've stated where I'm gonna um put my support, so.
Yeah. Commissioner Sumner, are you able to make the steering committee meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So would we need to, in order to get this in a timely fashion, would we need to vote on it to- tonight and then um go with our chances or wait, wait?
So, Tim, regardless of what he would find in his email about the deadline, if if he finds that it's October first and we don't meet until the third, uh so that we would basically have to vote on it tonight, then we wouldn't have unanimous vote because of things that people, what you're saying, which it does, you know, I mean, that probably wouldn't go well for our trying to get monies to offset the costs. Um, I I I think it, you know, with all due respect, I think it's premature to be in the minutia of what programs we're gonna be including or not including at this point in the game.
Well, you know, and I, I mean, uh I I believe that we are uh entitled to, you know, our our opinions and thoughts and and, you know, programming is very important to me and the folks that we um the population that we have in in and the, you know, uh county jail, so um you know, it's a high priority for me to ensure that, you know, programming, you know, remains a um a a huge priority for for, you know, the entire county, so um.
I think it's important for all of us, Tim, not just you, and I think that we are gonna try to get as much programming as we can included in the project to keep our recidivism rates down as much as possible, um but we also have to, you know, try to be as fiscally responsible as we can too with getting monies from the state and other things, so having unanimous support would help us with that, which would help us then get more money for programming. So, um, I just think that, uh, you know, uh we should, we should be trying to get the as much outside support as possible, and by being unanimous, we'd have the best opportunity for that. If we're not going to, you know, have unanimous support tonight, then I will withdraw my motion.
Any more discussion?
You were the second, yeah.
I would, I would draw my second.
Okay.
Um, Mister Chair, I'd like to recommend that we move this item to twelve D, so we can bring that up again after uh our administrator has a chance to check his emails on date specific.
Okay. Sounds good. You.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, then the next item, there is which one? The opioid.
Yeah.
Settle them, yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners, uh thank you for having me, I am Amy Bowles, the Public Health Director. And I'm here tonight to seek um your approval of the attached document titled the Opiate Settlement Steering Committee. Um, some county members have been working really hard on the formation of this document, including um selecting very carefully the individuals to have on the steering committee. For the last two months, we've been combing through some applications, and so uh tonight, uh we're here to seek your approval uh for the county commissioners um to use this as our working document um to guide the work that we do, and in addition, um that would include the approval um of our county member, our community members um that would be joining the county team.
Okay.
Any questions?
So do you have a list of the members?
I do, they are listed in the open um steering committee guidelines, so under the mission, vision, and members, you'll have number two and that will be letter D.
Hmm, yeah.
Yes, D is our uh current community or county members, the county employees. And then letter D is our individuals who have submitted an application, these individuals have not been notified yet, uh we're waiting your approval.
They would all be added?
Yes.
If we approve.
Correct.
Hey, questions?
Uh, Mister Chair, um, I guess for the sake of discussion, I'll make the the motion that we approve the opioid settlement steering committee guidelines.
I think it would, I think it's a, would it be a package deal that we could?
That's why I'm presenting it to you, if you would like to break it up, you're welcome to.
Guidelines and membership. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Uh, Mister Chair, I believe, uh, I, was it last week? Or we meet uh every second Monday of the month uh from two to four. And last week was the second Monday, so our second meeting, um we we spent a a significant amount of time uh going over the uh community advisor members' applications and things like that. Um, I believe there were a total of maybe fifteen uh community members that applied for these um positions and um I know that there was a lot of discussion about, you know, uh trying to figure out, well, you know, which ones would be um would 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 be a good fit, you know, for this committee, um. So, it was, it was uh a hard decision because there were so many people that are involved, uh so many people that care about, you know, our community. Um, so I I don't know if I'm uh I'm missing anything, but that this is what the committee has uh came forward with for the advisory members.
Mister Chair.
Okay.
Yes, Joe, would it be possible uh for Amy to just kinda give us a, you know, five, ten seconds on who each person is, uh who they represent, their position, et cetera?
I thought you might ask, Joe.
Thanks.
No, that's right. So part of the, part of the interview or screening process is we didn't know who was who, uh the names were were, you know, uh uh redacted, so I mean, the the scoring that we did was was fair, you know, to to each applicant and uh this we didn't know the names until after, you know, we we tallied our our scores, so.
Okay, I guess just another question, uh thank you for this, by the way, uh another question is um once the decision has been made for distributing the funds, does that come to the board for final approval before it goes to in other words, who's making the final decision?
The Commissioners would be.
Okay. I think that's important, but I think it's important to get out there too. Okay, any uh questions uh now from the board? Do we have, we had the motion?
Yeah, we had a motion in a second.
Okay, Joe, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, thank you. Right?
Presentation in the room, um, the now we're at the approval of proposed this year twenty twenty-four budget. Look, that's, we're on, that's on item twelve, we are, we're still on eleven, we're on item number one.
Okay. Item number eleven, and it has to do with the the budget.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, Commissioners again. Um. As you know, uh, last meeting, I distributed the budget book, preliminary budget book, and uh we discussed uh at the board meeting. The preliminary uh FY twenty four budget and levy. Uh, tonight is the evening that we are hopeful to address any questions or concerns and get hopefully your approval. Uh, for the preliminary budget and levy, as you know, uh, once you set the levy. Uh, it cannot be raised between now and its final approval in December, uh but it can be reduced. So without further ado, we'll go into a little bit here uh regards to the process. As you know, this is a long. Process, so we start generally in about April or so, and then by June, the department heads are involved and budgets are primarily put together. Uh, this uh slide here talks about that process. Uh, you've gone through it. Uh, it's really more for the benefit of the public, so. Uh, the only other thing I'd point out on it is uh the membership of the budget committee, again, Commissioner uh Gould and Commissioner Carlson. And then myself, the auditor treasurer and the finance director. Um, there are some drivers that are pushing our budgets and have been for some time. We've talked about these, uh so I'll just. Just briefly remind you and then also hopefully um. Uh, bring the the information to the public as well. The economic climate has been tough. Uh, for essentially everybody for some time, and inflation is affecting really every aspect of our operation. Um, although it has peaked, uh last year, it still remains high. And the problem is although the composite number has come down, there are certain sectors of inflation that are still very, very high. And in some cases are costing the county two and sometimes three times the uh expense uh as they had traditionally. Um, workforce remains an issue. Uh, we have seen uh continued movement in the workforce, largely. Associated with wage pressures and uh insurance benefits, and so that's certainly the case with the county. We have a high turnover rate. Uh, and it's becoming more difficult for us to compete with other uh local and regional entities. So that is something that's also on the horizon for us to have to have to um work through. County reserves are in good shape. Uh, this is something we've been working on slowly. Uh, we are within the targeted four to six month reserve period. Uh, building growth remains kind of static, so we're seeing growth in value. But not necessarily uh in construction. And then property tax base, again, just as a reminder for the public, you're well aware of this, we have about thirty percent of all the land within the county. Uh, that's only taxable. So we have a s- a large uh service area and a very law, a very small tax base. Uh, we do have additional drivers. Uh, one of those drivers is the um the jail, and as you know, we've been dealing with this for some time. Uh, out of county housing costs are increasing and um that's become a big burden for the county. Uh, we'll be pushing uh close to one point six million next year in anticipated out of county housing costs. And so that's again the need for trying to move the jail project forward as quickly as we can. Medical and food costs continue to escalate. Right now, we're facing a pretty sizable medical um. Request or a medical contract adjustment request uh that we're trying to work through. And then um the new jail project, of course, is going to be something that's going to be considerable uh as it relates to ongoing finances. Hospital level, level of care expenses, we've talked about this at great depth, so I won't go into it in any detail here, but um. Those mandated expenses on the county continue to grow. Uh, some of them have been mitigated through some state legislation this year, which has been great. Uh, but other areas continue to grow, uh and we end up with hundreds of thousands of dollars in payments. Uh, for uh sometimes a single case uh annually, so those are, those are continuing to be a concern. Uh, the highway maintenance shop and of course roadway conditions continue to be a concern. Uh, and then state legislative funds, I just wanted to make a quick plug uh to let the public know that essentially we did get an infusion of state funds this year, about four million dollars. Uh, which was anticipated last year. Uh, unfortunately, that legislation moved through this year, and so the county has done pretty well. In securing additionally uh additional funds from the state. Uh, of the four million, most of that is earmarked or pass through money, so it actually impacts our operation and brings down the operational costs by adding additional revenues. About one point five million or so. Uh, so it is good news, but a lot of that money is, as I say, earmarked. And uh already preprogrammed and can't be used um really operationally for us. These are the budget highlights here. As you see, uh, the budget is increasing by about that four million dollars. Um, this includes the new state money uh and uh and a small uh property tax increase, or I guess that depends on your perspective. Uh, we'll get to that in just a second, but uh you can see the comparison between the twenty twenty three budget and twenty twenty four budget, largely driven by those revenues. Um, so this is what the proposed levy looks like. It's about six point six five percent being recommended. We started at about seventeen percent, you might recall, uh when we were at the very beginning of the process. Uh, fortunately, when the state legislature uh passed the legislation that brought us an infusion of additional but monies. Uh, we were able to see an immediate reduction uh to the levy of about five percent or so. Also, that we manage between the twelve percent and down to the six point six five percent right now, uh which is uh, which is pretty good. Uh, I think given uh how much time and and what we have discussed during the budget committee meetings. So um that's where we stand essentially. The proposed levy at six point six five would raise about one point nine million dollars of additional funds. Uh, again, big drivers are inflation-related expenses, insurance and staff. Uh, those are always the drivers uh pretty much in the budget. Uh, the combined funds from a revenue source perspective is up on the screen now, again, um pretty interesting. Uh, to to always show that uh we actually get the majority of our money from not taxes, uh or at least not local taxes, I should say. Um, only about thirty four percent of our funding comes from local taxes. Uh, most of it comes from intergovernmental funds and revenue sharing from the state. Uh, licenses and permits, special assessments, and then charges for services also come in uh with additional revenue. The combined funds in regards to expenditures are about the same. Uh, the cost centers haven't shifted a whole lot in regards to. Uh, first, second, third, fourth place, but their percentages change usually on an annual basis by about a percentage point or two. Uh, there are some staffing modification modifications contemplated in the budget, about six point one five uh FTEs, two of those. Are levy related, uh so those are driving a little bit of the levy increase. Uh, you know that we've done a pretty good job over the years trying to hold the number of growing positions down. Uh, this year uh was difficult to do. In addition, four of the positions are coming with funding. Or coming with addition or going to net additional revenue, so uh there's some good news there in regards to offsetting the impacts of those four FTEs. Budget.
Mister Chair. Uh, Tom, with the last one here, the the CBS, that's the County Veteran Services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just kind of curious. I know a number of years ago. Uh, with the previous uh uh veteran service officer. Um, you know, he he presented a, he presented the board at the time, you know, uh. Uh, making cuts, you know, to the office, so I'm just kind of curious how. How in the matter of a. A year and a half or two years uh since his departure, we go from. One point four four to uh three uh FTEs when uh. Ha- has the the workload increased, uh or or? Um, it's kind of curious about that.
Yes, I wish um our CBSO officer was here, but uh what he has said, and and I'll look to the budget committee members also to back me up on this. In case I get it wrong, but it is true that the amount of applications has increased, and one of the biggest drivers lately is the changes in federal legislation. That federal legislation is making more people eligible and in many cases post-eligible. Uh, meaning that they can go back in time and pick up additional benefits. If you add that in addition to coming out of the pandemic, when a lot of folks were sort of, I wouldn't say maybe suppressed, but. Uh, weren't as busy, uh arguably during that time period, we've also picked up traffic out of the pandemic. And then thirdly, we have the Veterans Home. The Veterans Home is is bringing a lot of people to our community from around the area. And those benefits and those claims are all being processed by our office as well, maybe not all, but a good majority of them as well, so there is an increase in workload. Additionally, um as our previous CBSO um was in the office, he had one, he had two FTEs. In that office, which were cut over time before I got here, uh and eventually reduced to one and a half. The halftime position was not filled, and he had, that was during the pandemic period, and he had um. He had agreed to kind of take that on and see if he can't keep the office continuing to run without having that additional halftime position. Uh, on his departure, as he left, he did advise me, and I believe he made a presentation to the board. Where he said, this isn't tenable, and we do need to increase the amount of staff to the office. Uh, that has been studied over this last year as well, and um in addition, we have two new, fairly new staff members serving in those leadership roles. Uh, and they would like to free up additional time to spend more time with the actual clients and less time doing data entry. Which is what the position being added to the budget is all about, doing and processing the claims and data entry. So that's how the evolution of the position request is uh essentially gone over the past years or so.
Alright, thank you.
Great question. Uh, okay, so American Rescue Act Plan Funding, uh this is just a. Detail of kind of what's included in the budget, uh some software, a building remodel or area remodel. Out of county housing contingency, four hundred thousand, again, that comes with a caveat that it'll only be used if it's needed. Uh, that way it doesn't uh require us to draw on reserves, um and it doesn't need to get spent if it doesn't need to get spent, right, or it won't be spent if it doesn't need to. Uh, a couple of vault toilets for the natural resources office and then labor expense of nine hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so the total requested amount, ARPA dollars is one point nine million going to the budget. The accounting for ARPA is here on the screen. Uh, essentially, as you know, we had an initial allotment of about nine point three or so, nine point two million. And um uh we have whittled that down over the last three or four years here, three years really. And so we have about nine hundred thousand unrestricted or unencumbered funds remaining. Uh, which uh we would recommend goes to next year's budgets, uh so that's what's uh available. If you are to approve uh this particular budget. Then this is just the acknowledgements. Uh, there is, it is a group effort to put the budget together, takes a lot of time and effort from a lot of folks. Um, finance team, Diane, a number of folks in administration and even HR and whatnot, the department heads all do a fantastic job, and certainly the commissioners that sit on the. The committee and spend. Seems like two dozen hours or so going through this stuff. Um, it's just a lot of work. Uh, in regards to next steps, um the approval deadline by the state uh statutorily is September thirtieth to have a preliminary budget and levy set. Uh, if it's not set by that time, last year's budget and levy goes in place. Um, and so it reverts back to that. Uh, tax statements will be going out mid-November. Uh, the budget hearing has been set. Uh, for December the twelfth, and then uh the county board uh is slated to adopt the final levy and uh budget. On December nineteenth uh before the end of the year, so that's what I have for you. Uh, the time is now yours as it relates to questions, comments, concerns, or adjustments.
Questions, comments?
Mister Chair, on page one twenty-two of the budget. Um, the Health and Human Services Department for equipment over five thousand, it shows no money for computers next year. But then ninety thousand a year for the following three years, and you uh. Is that just a rotational thing where they do a third, a third, a third of the computers and the entire Health and Human Services? Uh, and they just happen to have next year is not a year that not any of them need to be replaced?
I can answer that, uh.
Okay.
What you'd like to. Uh, we are, we are, we have a fund in MIS, uh a technology fund that has grown substantially. And one of the things that I have done as the administrator is try to make sure that our reserve accounts or these separate funds don't grow too large. So we're utilizing funds from these growing balances to offset operational costs that would normally hit the budget on a cyclical basis. So it's sort of a pause um for certain areas as we utilize the fund balance to pay for some of those expenses. And then, of course, that has, it's not sustainable, because as the balance comes down, we have to go back to what we we used to be doing, so you're seeing some of that in the budget too, Mister Gosby.
Okay, uh, thank you, Administrator. Um, and then there's a typo, I believe, on twenty twenty seven year. Um, for the vehicle expense for that same Health and Human Services, it was forty five thousand a year for twenty four, twenty five and twenty six. But then twenty seven, it says forty five hundred bucks, that must be a pretty cheap vehicle. I think there missed a zero there.
Oh, for, that's in the CIP for the twenty twenty seven year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take. Not a big deal, but, and thank you for the explanation.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Um, I just had a couple of. Uh, questions quick, uh, though I was on the budget committee, uh. Is, has a figure been put together as far as um? New construction. Um, adding to the tax base. The value on that. Is that? Uh, readily available tonight? If not, that's okay, but I am curious.
Hmm, I guess Commissioner Gould, in what sense are you looking for added construction value? Or are you looking for a forecast for future construction?
Um, I guess, uh. You know, value on commercial property going up potentially, or any additional new businesses, any additional new construction? That would be new tax revenue.
We do have that data. I don't have it with me, but I could ask the assessor to pull that data, and we could get that to you either in email or. If you'd rather a presentation, we could do that as well. We do track that by and by class, essentially. And we can compare last year with this year's um data and show you what we're seeing. Um, and then Joe should be able to parse out whether that's construction-related uh growth. Or whether it's market value growth or those sorts of things, so he's got, his office has that data.
Hmm, and you mentioned in your earlier report that it was somewhat stationary, it was not a huge amount that would be.
No, yeah, I think, I think when I, if I recall correctly, Joe was saying it's pretty minimal, it's low, you know, single digits. Uh, in regards to construction growth, but as we all know, market value has grown double digits, so that's where you're seeing your increases in tax base. And that's also, if you look, I can't remember the page offhand, uh if you look at uh tax capacity or excuse me, tax rate. You're seeing our tax rate come down, which is inherently what happens when you get an increase in market values. And so you're seeing those relationships play out, um as we see market values increase over this last couple of years. Now we're watching the uh tax rate come back down. Uh, it's actually the lowest it's been, I think. Since we, well, at least in the graph that we're showing, if we track it for five years or so, something like that.
Yes. Uh, so thank you, Mister Chair. I guess at this time I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the prelim- preliminary. Budget for twenty twenty four at the six point six five percent.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. And I do thank. Our folks here that worked on that committee and also Joe and. This young man here.
Uh, I want to thank the department heads for doing a great job, uh and 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 all the department heads did a marvelous job on getting. Some pretty high numbers down to a number that we could live with, so thank you.
I appreciate the, everybody not using all of the ARPA money up all in this year. Ease the pain, uh. So having one low year and then have a potentially spike.
Well, having Joe and John on that committee, I think it was, it was good to his incoming commissioners to.
It was eye-opening.
It's a good experience.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next uh.
Uh, next.
Opportunity.
Next item is approval of the uh minutes. Uh, that we moved from the consent agenda.
Uh, so at this time, Mister Chair, I move that we amend the minutes. Of the September fifth board meeting regarding the op- opioid settlement funding allocation amounts. To what was approved at the September fifth meeting, which was fifteen percent for youth services, not ten percent, so it might have been a typo, not sure what. But those minutes needed to be corrected.
Third second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Uh, next item, Mister Chair, would be uh continued discussion of the jail design contract. That was recommended to us by Ben from Construction Engineers.
Okay, and did you have a chance to? Is this what you were gonna look for?
No.
No. Okay, alright.
Oh, I don't think we need anything more other than just. We were just bringing this forward for a vote, so I'd make the motion that we go ahead and approve of moving forward with the. The recommendation from Construction Engineers to um go to the next phase of the design. Um, and knowing that we do have the out of fifty percent, you know, should we need it?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, Mister Chair, so during the regular meeting, I was just kind of curious and inquiring. If it, if if it was possible to uh push this out. Uh, for a couple of weeks, I mean, it was mentioned that we're kind of in a low where there is nothing going on. Um. I'm not too sure. Well, I'm not ready to to move on this, uh being that it's the first that I heard. Well, I'm not ready to to move on this uh being that it's the first that I heard uh this presentation, so. Yeah.
Okay. What else?
So this, this motion is the. Recommendation, assuming the. Vote passes this upcoming November and would save us the most amount of money. Inflation wise. Um, okay.
That's why I would say quite, quite a lot, so.
And so we, you know, by not pushing it, we gain a couple more weeks of. Uh, you know, getting more design done and keeping the project moving instead of waiting.
Two weeks? I mean, what, what's the difference, what's the difference gonna be? I mean.
I mean, when you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Uh, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, fifty grand.
Fifty thousand dollars is the difference. That's, that's real money.
It's significant, yeah. I mean, probably higher than that, yeah. So, uh, yeah, so I think um, um, no, no real point, uh, we, we have saved. The amount of money that we're committing four hundred and fifty thousand, we saved more than that just by the donation of the property. So we're essentially. You know. Very fortunate to be in the position we are to help keep the project moving and save even more money by, by the savings that we got and not having to purchase the property.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I, I do think it's important that the commission knows what the number is that's at stake in regards to your vote. Uh, so Mister Mattson, I believe it's one hundred and sixty thousand for two weeks. Is that correct? So a two-week delay could potentially cost uh additional one hundred and sixty thousand by not saving that money moving forward. Um, because when you take the inflation on a monthly basis, you know, that's how the math works out essentially, as I recall in the presentation. So just, just so you're aware, not to put pressure on anyone or the vote or that sort of thing, but just so that you knew as you were debating it.
Any more discussion?
Well, Mister Chair, I, I think with, with that, you know, uh, being said, I'm not too sure. Um. I, I think the good thing about, you know, having these discussions, it allows us an opportunity to give more information and uh. Uh, gives us a chance to uh rethink our, our decisions. So, you know, hearing, you know, the. The, you know. How much we could save, you know, um, I think it would be helpful.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Uh, scheduled next Mister Chair would be the administrator's update because we moved the approval, the resolution of support to the end, but I. Kind of feels like we should do that before and do the administrative report last.
Technically, we didn't. Delayed the thing because it was already agreed on the schedule to be up ahead.
So, let's do the, uh, let's have the discussion about the approval of a resolution for support of the jail.
Okay. Who would like to speak to that?
Did you get a chance to put that up?
Yes, sir, I did. Uh, October thirteenth was the requested time that we have the resolution in, so there would be. An opportunity on October third for the board to entertain this item again and then make a decision if it so chose.
Mister Chair, my question would be, what information would Commissioner Sumner be looking for? Um, so that we could get unanimous at that point if we are going to wait until our next meeting?
Well, I guess uh, it would be helpful having that discussion tomorrow during the um. Steering Committee meeting. Um, and I guess I would. Maybe have some discussions with our administrator on, on. What uh? Some of these comments that were made. I mean, I've, I've heard, you know, a few comments as well since our last meeting in regards to um. In regards to this matter, so uh, I think that would be helpful. And I agree that, you know, I. It would be a strong message, you know, to send to Saint Paul if we all agree. Um. And it does sound like that we do have at least a couple of more weeks. Um. Who allow uh. Us to get to that point, so um.
And Mister Chair, I do know that uh. The chairperson of the Senate Capital Investment Committee is interested in seeing. Outdoor program space. She did ask about that at the tour. Um. And I, I think she's. Hoping for that, so. Um, I think that would increase our chances of receiving now some bonding support from the state as well if that was in there.
I think it all comes down to what, what. We can afford and, you know, is it, how much? And how, how much is it going to cost operationally? Um, that we need to take the expert's opinion on these same, but then if nobody else is doing it. That should be a strong signal of why. And, you know, for programming space. Um. If it's not being done by other branding facilities, there's probably a good reason for it.
Well, you know, Mister Chair, if I may, you know, Bell County is unique, you know, um, I'm not too sure if. Other counties uh have the same demographics, same issues, same. Um, concerns that, you know, some of us may have. So, I mean, I, I think that uh. You know, uh. These new places, these new correctional facilities may not. May not have taken that into consideration. So, you know, I think we're, we have an opportunity, you know, to really be different, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not taking any, I'm saying anything, no. Period. Not, not, I mean, there are other communities, Lake County has other demographics that are other cultures that are not Native American. And, you know, if they aren't doing it either. You know, they're, I mean. Women's football, basketball courts, and you know, the list would go on and on. But what can we, what can we afford and what's, what's reasonable? Um, that, that's what I'm, all I'm looking at. And I want the most bang for our buck on reducing recidivism. And not, not maxing out the eighty million dollar number right up to that either.
Any more discussion?
So knowing that we have a, have a little time, Mister Chair, I would, I would move that we table this for our next meeting.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? People. People, alright, good discussion though.
Yep.
And I think we need to get, we need to separate. Fact from what maybe is a fact, and you double check if it's true, you know. For sure it was, or uh, as experienced. With that, Mister Chair, I think finally we administer about this. Alright.
It didn't take more than hour.
Actually, it's an hour and a half this night, this evening. No, we'll make it quick. Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, Commissioners. Uh, we'll continue with the jail uh as an update. Uh, because there's just so much going on with this particular project. Uh, you are aware that the capital investments committees, uh, both from the Senate and the House did take tours of the facility. Uh, the Senate came last month, uh, the House just came last Thursday. Uh, as you know, and hopefully uh, uh, we can get the word out to the community, we did apply for fifty million dollars of funding. From the state to help offset the costs for uh local taxpayers on the jail. And um, both of those groups, the, the committees came to tour the jail and got a nice presentation. Uh, they were very inquisitive, asked a lot of good questions. Uh, I think we're in the best spot we could be at the moment, uh, provided we amend our application to include the resolution of support. Um. But essentially, um, I thought it went very well and I appreciate to the commissioners that attended and also spoke. Uh, I thought that was very important for the committee members to hear as well. Additionally, on the jail project, we continue our efforts on uh educating the public. Uh, there's a couple of recent activities uh regarding uh education around the sales tax referendum, including um. Putting information into the newsletter. The newsletter should be hitting uh households, uh, probably late this week, uh, next week or so. Uh, there's about good three or four pages worth of information in there about the jail, the project, kind of what's been done, the programming, importance of. Um, you know, voting, um, all of that sort of stuff. Uh, we've also sent letters to township officers throughout the county. And also uh, in uh, encouraged them to reach out to us if they wanted more information or additionally wanted us to come and make a presentation to their boards. Uh, we're in the process of sending letters to mail ballot precincts, uh, so that they become aware. Uh, about the importance of the vote and get educated about the issues. And then we'll be sending additional letters out as we get closer to the election. Uh, lastly, just want to let everybody know that early voting starts Friday. So it's pretty amazing how quickly time flies. Uh, but essentially, our office will be prepared to accept voters uh Friday morning. And uh, and um, that is, of course, the only thing on the county's ballot at this point in time. So uh, lastly, on the jail project, the Greater Bemidji Area Joint Planning Board is going to be taking up a text amendment to their planning and zoning ordinance that specifically addresses the jail and the jail project. Uh, the uh board chair and the vice chair, our county board chair and vice chair, so Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Anderson. Uh, have been working with me to develop the county's formal uh comments on the text amendment, uh, which we tend to submit probably the next day or so. Um, the hearing is scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-eighth, so next Thursday. And I imagined, uh, well, actually, I know that the county's going to be there to make some uh comments on the, the text amendment, so. Um, I'll be communicating that information to the Joint Planning Board staff uh over the next couple of days. Um. Also want to let you know, kind of on a brighter note here, the September twenty-sixth is the management team's uh first sort of networking, team building activity that we've. Held, at least since I've been with the county. Uh, the pandemic took two years of that away and then uh. Uh, for, we've had a lot of turnover inside the management team as well, so we have a lot of new members um of the management team. And so this will be an opportunity for us to kind of get together, you know, learn a little bit more about each other. Uh, network and team build and that sort of stuff. So that'll be occurring on the afternoon of September twenty-sixth. And um. Lastly, I just want to give you an important date reminder. Uh, Monday, September twenty-fifth is the special board meeting. Uh, for the Harvest Activities Tour at Mobile Maze and Three Island Park. Uh, we'll be meeting uh four o'clock at the Mobile Maze Shelter. I know some of you can't make that. Um, we're aware of that, but for the remainder of you, just a nice reminder. And then um. I think that's all I have for you this evening.
Mister Berry, is, Mister Chair, um, is that the deal at the um Mobile Maze that? Um, you mentioned as a board meeting, is, that's basically a tour of the facility?
It is. It's a special board meeting because you all are going to be there as a quorum, so we have to announce it as a special board meeting, but its intention is to be just a tour.
Yeah, I may or may not be able to make it there at a funeral that happened, uh, unfortunately, so um.
Opposed, or? But uh, it's just to cover ourselves, we'll be there more than two.
If we had more than two, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that was clear and, and I'm, I'm, I've got a funeral at two o'clock that day, so I don't know that I will. Be there for sure. And I'm planning after that, yeah, so. And possibly a jazz day meeting, so, thank you.
Okay. Uh, now I believe that we're in the legislative lobbying issues or commission report. And I'd like to share, so.
Um, okay, uh, let's see here. I have a couple of meetings coming up. Uh, K R L S library meeting on Thursday. And. Uh, Hope House meeting. Coming up. Tomorrow. Uh, and last week I attended a BICAP board meeting. Down in Walker. Uh, the main highlight. From that is uh, we were able to um increase. Some of the employees paid by three percent with some uh additional grant dollars we were able to utilize, uh, so. Um, that's it.
Yep. Yeah.
Uh, Mister Chair, so um. Thursday I have a Black Duck Ambulance Meeting, also a. Um, Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center meeting, so. I'll be absent at that one to attend the Black Duck Ambulance Meeting tomorrow, got the Jail Steering Committee meeting. Um. Yesterday, I had my first uh NACO. Uh, Finance Pension and uh. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee Monthly Call. Um, it was pretty interesting. Uh, there's a lot to learn, um, especially when they talk about acronyms that. I'm not aware of such as S L F R F. Um, so still a learning process, but I did enjoy it. Uh, we talked about, you know, uh, ARPA, uh. You know, emergency relief, things like that, so that was fun. Uh, spent an hour doing that uh by, by uh Zoom. Uh, next week, um, I'll be attending the Shack. Uh, annual retreat down in Wilmer, so. Um, that is about. All I have right now, the jail, the uh. Meeting last week with the legislators was uh pretty interesting, you know, getting a tour of the jail. Um, the last time I was in, uh, got a tour of the jail was uh, you know, prior just to being sworn in ten years ago, eleven years ago, whatever it was. So a lot has changed, a lot has deteriorated. Um, so, you know, I, I completely understand the need and the importance of uh a new facility, so um.
Let's see, makes us good.
Yeah. Um, so that's my report tonight, thank you.
Mister Chair, I also uh, uh, forgot to mention that I've attended a couple of uh NACO committee meetings, um, National Association of Counties. Uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee, um, they meet a couple of times a month, so zoomed into those as well.
Uh. Uh, big thing to report was. Um, last um Tuesday. I had the pleasure of joining Commissioner Sumner up in uh the, the uh Red Lake Wellness Center in Redby. For the Mississippi River City and Town Initiative Opening Ceremonies. And it was, it was beautiful, it was a great ceremony. And Tim and I got to have dinner together. Um, and a big shout out to Mayor George Prince for all the work that he did. Um. He did an amazing job of, and I know he had some help, but, but I know George really had a lot on his plate without having a city manager and, you know, but a big shout out to the city and, and to Mayor Prince.
Mister Chair, if I may follow up on that, I mean, it, it was a really good event. I mean, uh, it's kind of historic. I mean, I don't know. Uh, the last time so many sitting mayors, you know, came up to, you know, the Bemidji, the, the city of Bemidji. So, I mean, it was, it was pretty cool. Um. Nice dinner. It sounds like there was a nice dinner the, the following night, so. Um, if you, you missed it, you missed a, a great event and uh, you know, so on. Yeah. I might have caught all of them, I don't know, no, just kidding. But uh, you know, uh, thanks for the reminder, Commissioner Carlson, about the, you know, the, the city of Bemidji did a, a, a great job in hosting.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, main thing was the uh Town of Turtle River had invited us to um. Come and basically talk to them about the, the jail and the, the sales tax referendum vote coming up and, and just give them the, the data. I had the printouts that we had gotten. Um, a couple of different uh data sheets and a, and a fax and verbiage that was going to be on the ballot. And so. Uh, Sheriff Briggs and I attended that on the twelfth and, and, you know, had a lot of good questions. Uh, the um, the Town of Turtle River Board was out there as well as a couple of constituents and, and uh. And they were very appreciative of us uh spending about an hour there. Going through everything with them. Uh, this morning we had our solid, solid waste committee meeting and uh. Um, we've directed that to be a future work meeting topic, so I won't spoil that, but there's a really good, really good short video. Um, some, a lot of good stuff that we're doing from Polk County Solid Waste for nine county region and um. And then also just the, the salt waste facility, some, some neat, cool technology improvements there and, and so we'll look forward to having a work session topic on that. Hopefully next time or maybe the following meeting. And that's uh, that's it for now, thank you.
Uh, so, there are more to do here in a couple of seconds. Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.